Get tickets now. Amazon has you covered. They're offering more jobs than Jersey has hoagies. Plus, you can earn sign-on bonuses up to $3,000 and pay up to $24.25 per hour. Many jobs come with great benefits that start on your first day, and Amazon offers a variety of paths for career growth. They even have flexible shifts and schedules so you can work when it works for you. Go to amazon.com/JersyJobs to get started today. Amazon is proud to be an equal opportunity employer.
You knew when she bought you that Rolex last year for your birthday? She was gonna want something big this year for her birthday. You ask her what she want? She tell you she want that Chanel bag. 2021. You ask her where to get it from? She said the same place I got your Rolex from. LXY Philly on Jeweler's Row. You get down there, as soon as you walk in the door, you see the Chanel bag looking right at you. It's talking to you. It's saying, "Your girl want me back." Hey Philly, there's a brand-new store. It's called LXY Philly. They specialize in pre-owned, 100% authentic handbags and accessories. We have Chanel, Hermes, Louis, Gucci, YSL. Pre-owned watches, Rolex, APs, Cartier, Patek. Follow us on Instagram, LXY Philly, to see our inventory. Or stop down to see us on Jeweler's Row. We are LXY Philly.
Festivals, football, the great outdoors. Some people say fall is the best time of the year. It may also be a great time to consider getting vaccinated against COVID-19. Sponsored by Biontech and Pfizer.
Hodges Orthodontics in Q and O two want to see your smile.
Good evening, and welcome to the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors meeting for December 8th, 2021. We will start with a moment of silence, followed by a pledge allegiance. So if we'd all bow our heads for a moment of silence. Do you stand with the board for a pledge allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lewis, any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we don't have any special actions. So we'll go into our first session of public comment. Anyone who would like to say something that is not on the agenda tonight?
Hello, good evening. Warren Dallas, President, Newtown Fire Association. The Fire Association's annual fund drive is underway. Letters were mailed out at the end of November. Please note, we do not solicit by mail. The firefighters of Newtown Fire Association are volunteers. They give their time to provide fire and rescue services to Newtown. Your donations go directly to the operations of the fire service that include maintaining our fire trucks and two fire stations and paying for things such as utilities and insurance. Your donation makes a difference for your protection and that of your neighbors here in Newtown. Your donation is tax deductible, as Newtown Fire Association is a 501(c)(3) organization. The officers and members of the Newtown Fire Association thank you for your support of the 2022 fund drive. Moving to a new topic. The Fire Association will be escorting Santa through Newtown on Saturday, December 18th. The rain date is Sunday, the 19th. Listen for the sirens and come out to see Santa. Thank you, and happy holidays to everyone. May I have any questions for me while I'm here?
Any questions?
Nope, very good.
No, Warren, I actually did. How can we donate if you do not solicit by mail?
We do solicit by mail, not by phone.
Okay, got it.
If I misspoke, yeah, we only solicit by mail. So you get phone calls looking for money for fire service. It is not legitimate.
Thanks.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Frank McCarron, 42 Rittenhouse Circle, Newtown. I'd like to talk about two items that occurred at the last Board of Supervisors meeting as they pertain to the Sunshine Act. I came to the last meeting to talk about the township budget, and it was on the agenda. And so during the two sessions of public comments for items not on the agenda, I dutifully sat down there and said nothing. But when it came to the item on the agenda, there was no public comments taken. It was just closed and moved on. And I'm sure that was inadvertent, but I think that a couple of things that you could do to avoid that would be, one, the solicitor, if that happens, could stop, you know, before moving to the next item and say, you know, "We haven't requested public comment." The other is to put the final public comment session at the end after everything else. So it's a catch-all, because that had happened before the township budget matter. So that's my thoughts on that. And unfortunately for you, I was planning on splitting my comments about the budget last meeting and this meeting. So when you do bring up that agenda item, I'm going to give you all my comments at once. So the second item is, as noted in the minutes, what happened last week. Mr. Lewis noted that the board met in an executive session to discuss litigation. I had appeared in a meeting, I think it was October, to raise the matter that, under applicable case law, that description is not sufficient. There's a case, Reading Eagle, which talks about that if there's going to be a meeting to discuss litigation, executive session, you have to give enough detail so the public understands why their right to participate has been denied. And I had specifically suggested language you had had in an earlier meeting having to do with Durham Partners Group and a medical office building, where you actually said, "We were meeting to talk about a settlement of that." So I'm hoping it was just inadvertent and that you were going to take into applicable case law into account and say that, rather than just say pending litigation, which is my understanding. I'm not a lawyer, but Mr. Sanders confirmed it at the meeting. Is more details required than just that. So, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay. Moving right along, Mr. Lewis or Mr. Shankman, would you like to make a comment about the executive session we had before this meeting?
Certainly, I can give a bit more detail. It was to deal with labor negotiations with our unions.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is consideration to adopt the 2022 final budget and the resolution. Mr. Lewis, is there any additional comments or issues that have been added to the budget or taken up with the budget recently?
So, as we do every year, we've gone back through the revenues, specifically the major line item revenues, to see where we stand before we make a recommendation for the board to adopt the final budget. There were two line items under the revenues that fortunately greatly exceeded the year-end estimates as we currently stand. First was the delinquent EIT and the real estate transfer tax. We had budgeted $220,000 for a year-end estimate for the delinquent EIT, and our current revenue sits at $257,000. Our recommendation is that the board amend the proposed budget to show a year-end estimate of $275,000. The second was the real estate transfer tax. We had budgeted $925,000 total for the year-end estimate. We're currently sitting at $990,000 roughly. We're recommending that the year-end revised estimate be increased to $1,090,560. This was another fortunate year for those two lines as far as revenues go. If these changes are approved by the board, if the board wishes to amend the budget as such, it would result in a 2022 estimated fund balance of $1,504,615, which equates to approximately 10.09% of total budgeted expenditures. So if I may, Mr. Chairman, propose a motion to the board, a motion to amend the proposed 2022 budget to update the revenue based on taxes received to date. As I just outlined.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
The motion is second. Any questions from the board on this motion? From the public on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? Pass this for zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second motion would be for the board's consideration to adopt the resolution adopting the 2022 proposed budget as amended as the final 2022 Newtown Township budget.
Do you have such a motion?
Make the motion.
Do you have a second? I'll second. Have a motion is second. Any question from the board? From the public?
I have some questions.
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay. As I had mentioned previously, I found that the budget does not, in my opinion, have enough money in it for improving our roads. And we, I would hope that we could establish some kind of a roadwork capital fund and actually bring back, instead of all the taxes that are going into the general fund, have a dedicated, take a dedicated portion of those for that fund so that we might be able to not only increase the money that's in this fund to pave more roads than the bare minimum. And also, if we end up at the end of the year where we haven't spent all that money, it stays in the fund, the roadwork fund, so it can only be spent on improving and repaving roads in the following year. Now, I'm not quite sure if we want to do that now. We can probably do that after the budget is approved in any case. The other thing I wanted to just point out is, I think we had talked about adding YouTube to the streaming capability of at least the Board of Supervisors meeting. And I think we had a proposal from Video Gold at around $5,000 or so. And I think that could be added to the budget without having us to be able to rehang the budget and all that stuff, because there's a expenditure, technical expenditures on page five, which is, I forget how much it is, $100,000. So if you add $5,000 to that, it's much less than the 10% that would, you know, necessitate rehanging the budget. I would like to make that proposal. Also, we have a lot of vehicles that we want to purchase. And again, this is not going to affect the budget, but I think there was interest from the Environmental Advisory Council that at least one of those F-150 trucks could be an electric truck. And I know that the Parks and Rec Department would like to have a new truck. And Ford does offer a Lightning electric truck. It's all-electric, and there's even some Pico rebates for charging stations if you have a charging station require that. These are just notes. The only thing is, I'd like to make a motion that we add that $4,900 or $5,000 to the budget for the YouTube. I don't know if we can have a motion within a motion, but that's my wish anyway.
Mr. Lewis, is this a expenditure that we could still do next year without having to adjust the budget tonight?
Yes, it could be done one of two ways. It could be taken from the American Rescue Plan money once we have the final rule written. That's pretty definitive under that plan, that this would qualify as an expense for that. Also, by resolution, the board could assign more funds in and out of the budget or to any of the funds associated with it. I would say that if the board is of a mind to do what you're saying, Mr. Mack, I would suggest that we allocate the funds out of the capital plan instead of the general fund, which is paid for by general fund money. It's just a different accounting technique that we've utilized here. So just to remain consistent.
Okay, I mean, I hope the federal government comes up with those regulations. I know we're a stickler for waiting for the federal government to act before we spend any of that money. But also, I would note that the Newtown Fire Association is a 501(c)(3), and they could qualify perhaps for some of that ARP money that we have. But that's down the road. So, thanks. I guess we deal with this in 2022?
That would be up to the board.
Well, I think that's a good idea. I don't know what the other board members.
Yeah, I think we should look at it next year. I like to use ARP funds for streaming. I think we definitely should do that. As far as the road allocation, I'm not sure I can make a call on how we're going to switch around revenue. We're at this point in the budget. I'd rather agree that we can have a separate account for leftover funds that go into it. I'm completely fine with that, and we don't need to do that tonight. And then maybe next year, look at if you want to shift around millage. Just for roads, maybe. I think at this point, we're pretty close to the end of the road to go digging in that. That's my opinion.
Okay. Little by little. Now, did you make a motion? It wasn't seconded, so. I'll withdraw it anyway. Okay, gotcha.
But I think the intent is there, that we all understand it.
Okay. Does she have anything?
Yeah, I guess the only piece that I wanted to add in the capital outlays for technology, there might be a place we could find money for YouTube as well.
Any further questions from the board? Now open it to the public.
Frankie Carron, 42 Rittenhouse Circle again. 2022 expenditures are budgeted to be $1 million more than E-Consult had forecasted. And my concern is whether this level of spending is sustainable. I would like to know if you have received a new five-year forecast so that you can understand the effects of this level of spending going forward. I will concede that, based on past budgets, you can make an educated guess that in 2022, the township won't spend all of the funds that it has been budgeted. Over the last five years, actual expenditures on a cumulative basis have been 3.8 million below budget. For 2021, the township budgeted $400,000 more in expenditures than E-Consult had forecasted. However, 2021 expenditures are now projected to be less than E-Consult had forecasted, practically $500,000 less. So that's a $900,000 budgeting error in the township's favor. And it's not just expenditures. The township budgeted 2021 local tax revenues to be lower than E-Consult had forecasted. Instead, local tax revenues in 2021 are projected to be higher than E-Consult had forecasted, and that's a $500,000 budgeting error in your favor. Nevertheless, in 2022, the township is again budgeting local tax revenues to be lower than E-Consult has forecasted. So my educated guess is that revenues will again be higher than budget. So while I have a concern over the overall level of spending, history allows me to make an educated guess that you won't spend it. But my concern is more about 2023 and beyond. The township will use its 2022 budget as a starting point to prepare its 2023 budget. E-Consult did that in their five-year forecast, growing expenditures by 3% a year. But by budgeting a $1.7 million shortfall in 2022 caused by expenditures exceeding revenues, even if it doesn't materialize, that will lead to a budgeted shortfall in 2023 north of $2 million. And at that level, it'll be hard for you to make educated guesses about whether your cash reserves at the end of '23 will be enough to go without a significant tax increase, and that's a problem. Township needs to be much more precise in its budgeting, because the shortfall may otherwise grow too large to make educated guesses about tax increases. Now let's talk about the five-year forecast. E-Consult had recommended that each year, the finance director prepare a rolling five-year forecast. One problem, though, is if the five-year forecast will be prepared similar to the budget, namely understating revenues and overstating expenditures, and you are forced to extrapolate and make educated guesses about its accuracy, it won't be useful to you. Another problem, it could be even worse, though, is let's say the 2022 budget is accurate, and your year-end 2022 fund balance is only $1.3 million. Then, looking at a $2 million shortfall in '23, you have a significant issue with taxes to address. Therefore, I'm making some recommendations, and I ask the town manager for three items next summer. First, a revised 2022 budget, including a reconciliation to what's being approved today, so you understand what's changed and why. Second, big-picture items for 2023. Some information for you, so going forward, you can decide directionally what you want to prioritize. And third, a status update on all the recommendations in the E-Consult report. Next year-end, I would ask the township manager to prepare the 2023 budget based on the mid-year 2022 revised budget, not the budget being approved today. And that will also reflect the mid-year guidance that we will give to them. And at the same time as the 2023 budget is prepared, the township manager should ask the finance director to prepare a new five-year plan. I want to talk about some big-picture items, though. Three areas that show increases in 2022 over 2021 are fire, police, and capital expenditures. One of the concerns I have post-2022 is that I believe you will have to prioritize funding of emergency services, meaning fire, rather than police services. For the second year in a row, you have not received a SAFER grant to fund the hiring of weekend firefighters. The deputy fire chief position was supposed to be funded by the SAFER grant. I don't know whether or not you have given up on getting a SAFER grant or you just can't wait any longer for a deputy fire chief. It seems to me that regardless of whether you get a SAFER grant this year, you should be planning for hiring weekend firefighters in 2023. Last year, I recommended that you reach out to Adam Selisker, who is the chairman of the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors and also their volunteer fire chief. Northampton Township received a grant in 2019 to hire weekend firefighters. And in 2020, Mr. Selisker helped Warminster Township get a $1.8 million SAFER grant to hire weekday firefighters. I had also recommended that the township hire a certified grant writer and speak with Bryan Fitzpatrick's office. The only response I received at the time was that the hiring of an assistant township manager would obviate the need for a certified grant writer. I believe it's important to do all you can to get a SAFER grant. I would strongly recommend you take these steps in 2022. And if it's okay with the fire chief, I would budget for the hiring of an assistant fire chief in late 2022, once the decision is known about SAFER funding. I'd also like to note that in Northampton Township's 2022 budget, they are applying for a SAFER grant to hire 10 more firefighters to have 24/7 coverage, so 24 hours a day, seven days a week, of paid firefighters. So this SAFER program is alive and well. You just have to figure out how to crack it. Also, E-Consult had projected that the Fire Protection Fund revenue would continue to grow slower than projected expenditures, operating at deficit. So something has to be done to shore up this fund. I agree with the 2022 budget recommendation for the township to follow the precedent set by Northampton Township and spend $100,000 per year on stipends for volunteers. It seems to me that shoring up emergency services should be the township's priority. If you look at the 2022 budget detail for emergency services, its accounts beginning with 01.411, the township's budget has been flat since 2020. The 2022 budget is only about $100,000 more than what was actually spent in 2020 or 2021. In contrast, the police department's budget is $1.1 million more in 2022 than was actually spent in 2020. I believe that this should be sufficient to shore up police services so that we have adequate police coverage. E-Consult noted that statewide, police staffing is about two officers per 1,000 of population. Newtown Township was at 1.5 officers per 1,000 population, or 1.3 if Wrightstown was added. However, E-Consult also noted that locally, where there is less crime, some of our neighboring townships were closer to a 1.1 ratio. Northampton is at 1.1 with 44 officers for 40,000 population. Buckingham is at 1.1 with 22 officers for 20,000 population, similar for Doylestown and Lower Makefield. So while we are not the state average of 2.0, it seems we are better staffed at some of our neighbors. And we should have flexibility to hold the line on future police hires in favor of emergency services. E-Consult also recommended that by the end of 2023, the township have a plan to form a regionalized police force that would encompass all of the Council Rock School District. If we have a ratio of 1.5 officers to 1,000 population, and Northampton has a 1.1 ratio, further hires may present a challenge in implementing that goal. Given E-Consult's recommendation and given our need for hiring emergency service firefighters, I believe you have to take a firm budgetary stand with regards to the police department, absent any offsetting revenues. I said last year that I thought Wrightstown had a good deal in terms of not having to bear pension costs under the contract for services with Newtown Township. I also said that the jointure gets a good deal by pushing commercial development into Newtown, which requires police, fire, and emergency services. But unless you can renegotiate with these townships, I believe the police department will have to operate on a tight budget. As for capital expenditures, the only thing I want to say is that E-Consult recommended that the finance director develop a multi-year capital improvement plan to be completed by the second quarter of 2021. And I don't know, but did this happen? Lastly, I want to finish up by talking to you about your finance committee. It seems to me that you're continuing to underutilize their skills by not making the finance committee an integral part of your budgeting process. If I were you, I would not want to see anything from the township manager on the budget that has not been reviewed by your finance committee. Now, you've had three chairpersons of your finance committee resign, and I just think that you need their help in achieving a much better budget. I will say, this is the end, but my last set of comments on expenditures in 2022. I've said before that I'd like to see the police force hire an officer of color. And I don't know whether or not any of the 2021 hires have achieved that. But if not, I request that you earmark some funds so the police department has the budget to recruit and necessarily relocate an officer of color to make that happen. Second, I don't want to steal, I see some people from the EAC here, and I don't want to steal any of their thunder. But I know that they've been working on presenting you with two proposals on LED conversion of lighting in the township. One of them through a company, Nextera, they would pay the money upfront and then earn it back through fees charged. And the second is through the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. And that may require, they'll do a initial feasibility study for nothing, but then the second phase would require a $31,000 expenditure before it can be presented to you. And, you know, this is a significant item, and I certainly think that you'd be better off being presented with two proposals. So I don't know whether or not that $31,000 would have to be approved today for them to be able to do that, or they can just come next year and ask you for $31,000. But I don't think they should be precluded from having the option to present this to you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else comment on the budget?
Johnny April, Newtown Grant, biggest and the best. That guy in one of your committees, it seems like he should be. He's got all the answers, I don't know. You talked about the cutting the police. Those whiny guys over on 413 over there would be the first ones to complain if a dog pooped on their lawn. So I don't know what he's talking about, you know? Anyhow, you got a member up there, he speaks with forked tongue. How many meanings did he say? Oh, can't dip into the reserves, can't dip into reserves. But he wants to raise taxes on everything. He wants to do the roads. Look around at your surrounding townships. There's no problem, there's no problems with Newtown roads compared to theirs. I mean, I used to drive for a couple of years and go into different townships and. I mean, I used to drive for a couple of years and go into different townships, and their roads were a lot worse than ours. So, I don't know what his problem is, he wants to spend money on that. Electric vehicles, does he drive an electric vehicle? I mean, you got Teslas blowing up now, you know, and they're supposed to be the best. Saying a Ford, you know, yeah, Ford, fix or repair daily, you know? You know, and then YouTube meetings. How many people are here? How many people aren't on the payroll that are here? You know? Why spend money on other, they don't come to the meetings as it is. A lot of them watch it on the reruns, or watch it on the computers, stuff like that, but, I mean, you know, gotta be Democrats, what can I say?
Anyone else? Is there anyone else before Mr. McCarron comes up a second time? Okay.
Sorry, I just want to clarify, I've not said to cut the Police Department budget. E-Consult had budgeted to hire three officers in the five-year forecast, we're hiring four. There's a $1.1 million we're spending, raising the level of spending compared to 2020. I haven't said anything about that. What I've said is your fire services is where you need to focus going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, please refresh our memory on the recent motion.
Mr. Chairman, the motion was to adopt, the resolution adopting the 2022 budget, as amended, as the final 2022 Township budget.
Okay. Dennis, you made that motion, I think I seconded the motion.
Yes.
Is that correct, Mary?
Yeah.
Okay. No further discussion from the board or the public, so I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 4-0. Next, Mr. Lewis, anything?
That's all as far as that item on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. No minor approvals, we'll go into reports of committees, boards, and commissions. I don't see any committees here tonight, so we'll go into reports from the board members. I will go to Mr. Fisher for his report.
I have just two items, one briefly to report about the Finance Committee. At the meeting on November 23rd, they met down in the hall, but they did not have a quorum. So, that's the report from the Finance Committee. The other item I wanted to bring up was volunteering for boards and commissions. And just want to make it clear that, or remind folks that there is a notice on the Township website for applying for boards and commissions. They would like a letter of interest, which can be as simple as a couple of sentences on an email and saying which committee or committees you'd like to volunteer for, and then attaching a resume. You can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lewis, but I think it can be as simple as that. I believe just about every committee has at least one vacancy, and a couple of them have multiple vacancies because they're a one-year committee. But just run through the committees real quick, zoning hearing board, planning commission, park and recreation, parks and recreation, environmental advisory committee, the joint historical, joint historical Newtown committee, I might have the words mixed up a little bit, the HARB, which is the Architectural Review Board, technology and communication, building code of appeals, finance committee, the veterans committee, the human relations committee, and the economic development committee.
Did you mention the technology committee?
I did, yeah, technology and communication. So, if you have expertise in any of those areas and can contribute to your community, please, please do so. That's what I got.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Mack?
Okay, I attended the joint zoning council meeting last Thursday, December 2nd, where they continued to discuss the distributed antenna system or small wireless facilities ordinance. The main, much of the discussions had to do with the appearance and design and location of the small poles within neighborhoods, especially in underground districts in which all utility installations are required to be installed underground, so there was a lot of concern about that. There's limited ability of townships to really regulate that, so no matter what the conclusion was, no matter what the ordinance says regarding those issues, we can't force small utilities who are putting up these 5G antennas to comply with the ordinance, but the, it was generally considered that any utility wanting to do that would, of course, for public relations purposes, come to the Township and talk about what they plan to do and hopefully negotiate the best way to proceed. But they're still working on that ordinance. The second thing was the Bucks County Planning Commission talked about, continued their analysis for the 10-year comprehensive plan. They analyzed the, what, how many new dwelling units are going to be required by 2030, given the population increase. They estimated a population would increase in the tri, in the jointure by 1,000 people, which would require about, I think they said, I don't know, 400 units or something like that. We do have the capacity in terms of land that can be developed for housing to accommodate that growth. Multi-family dwelling units were also discussed, and the average in Bucks County is 4,200 such units per, in townships in those areas, and we already have in our jointure 4,600. So, there was opinion that there's no need to consider adding more multi-unit dwellings, multi-family dwellings. Under miscellaneous, next year, the Newtown Solicitor will be the jointure Solicitor, and that person will be determined here, January 3rd, at our reorganization meeting. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the Park and Rec Report. Over 150 children participated in our annual candy cane hunt this past Saturday. The event was sponsored by Pico. Thousands of candy canes were spread out at Roberts Bridge Park for kids to collect. There were special appearances by Santa, La Grinch, and Olaf. Also, a big thank you to all of the volunteers for the event. Pictures can be found on our Facebook page at Newtown Fund. The Park and Rec Department is also selling $9.50 regal movie tickets, if you want to purchase them. Also, there are upcoming programs, registered today for the filing programs, starting soon, Gingerbread House Decorating Party, and then Schools Out Workshop. That's all I have for the Park and Rec Report. I do have a letter, a thank you letter, I'm going to read. If everyone recalls, not too long ago, a retired police captain, Norm Moorhead, passed away. His family wanted to come and thank everybody, but didn't think they could do it at the podium, so they sent a letter and asked me to read it, so I'm going to read that if you don't mind. My name is Karen Moorhead Dalton. Our father, Norman A. Moorhead, was police officer at the Township, retiring as captain after 40 years. He began his career in 1968. He was a patrol officer at first and worked his way through the ranks until he promoted to captain. Our mother, Linda, and our father, Norman, passed away in September, two weeks apart. They had just celebrated their 50th anniversary this past May. We would like to take this opportunity to thank Newtown Township Police Department for the police support they gave our mom from the funeral home to the cemetery. We would also like to thank Newtown Emergency Services, Newtown Fire Association, and the Newtown Township Police Department for their friendship and support during this time. We would also like to take this time to thank the officers of the Newtown Police Department, Newtown Emergency Services, and Newtown American Legion for their support and friendship when our dad passed. Dad received a police escort from the hospital to the funeral home. He was honored by having his police family be his pallbearers and received a full police escort to his final resting place, where he also received full military honors. Our dad loved his job, loved his officers, and loved his community. We've had so many stories shared about both of our parents, even if it was so simple as our mom bringing lunch every day, or always having leftover holiday food to share with the officers that had to work. She was proud to be a police officer's wife and loved his police family like her own, and she loved her community as well. We know how honored our parents were, that we were always, and we will always be thankful. As our dad would say each time he saw someone, "Be careful, stay safe, and stay healthy." Sincerely, the Moorhead family. I'll forward that in the email, too, but I just, but...
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
He was a good man.
Yeah, he was a really nice guy.
I miss seeing him out there on 413 taking care of his lawn, when I would drive by and wave to him, but...
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, we have no public hearing tonight, no land development. Reports of officials, engineers report.
First item we have tonight is the Arcadia Newtown Holdings Sewage Planning Module Review. We completed a review of the planning module that was submitted for the subdivision, and we found it to be complete. The EDUs that are referenced in here are in line with the Township's sewage comprehensive plan, so we recommend review and signature by the appropriate municipal official.
Okay. What would the motion be?
The motion would be to approve the planning module for Arcadia Newtown Holdings.
Okay, do I have such a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second? Any questions from the board on this motion?
This all has to do with just the sewage?
Correct, yep, just sewage, planning, yep.
Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 4-0.
Okay, thanks. The next item, I wanted to provide an update on the DVRPC LED lighting program that we had discussed at a prior meeting. In between the last meeting and this one, the Township and myself had a meeting with DVRPC and their representative from Keystone Lighting. We reviewed the options and quickly, you know, talked about Township budget and things of that nature. So, because of the timing of the plant, of the phase of that funding program, which right now they're in phase three, and where we are in the Township budget process, they recommended that we, that the Township be included in the phase four of the funding program, so that would kick off next year. So, ideally, we would start to get involved with that in the summer of 2022 if the board is inclined. So, you know, by pushing it back a little bit to that next phase of funding, we'll allow the Township to adequately budget, to plan for that in 2023. So, that's, I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions for Leanna?
Well, I just had a comment. I did have a phone conversation with the people you spoke with, and they were hopeful that we could get involved. At first, they said they might not have a phase four program for 2023, but they said because Newtown is such, you know, a big job, that that would push along their decision, basically, to start that and might get other townships interested if we were involved. And so, yes, they suggested we might get more involved earlier on, maybe even earlier than the summer, I don't know, to talk about, you know, the feasibility study again and planning forward. Plus, I know the Environmental Advisory Council had also discussed an alternative plan, Nextera, which is a different type of plan, and I thought it was very interesting. What their plan is, is they would purchase, they would take over the ownership of all the streetlights and upgrade them to LED at no charge, but they would, you know, own the streetlights. And I just was at a webinar today about solar energy in the, near Penn State University in the water treatment plant, where they did a similar type of project, where a private company actually provided this solar panel farm for them, and they owned it. And, but the water treatment facility saved thousands and thousands of dollars every year because of the solar power. And then, after, I don't know, five or 10 years, they're able to buy back that farm at a much reduced rate, at a much reduced price because of the depreciation, the natural depreciation of that. And they figured that in the end, they would save $10 million through that process. So, you know, this is something that I think these two plans we might consider in 2022 and get more feedback from the Environmental Advisory Council on that.
Okay. Anything, any other questions for Leanna? Mr. Lewis, you and the engineer will keep up on conversations about this?
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to clarify, there's like the $31,000 that's been referred to already, that was like for, to be presented with the feasibility study?
The feasibility study is done at no cost from Keystone, but the next phase is their design and them taking the information that they got from the feasibility study and actually planning out, and that's what that $31,000 is for.
The design, engineering.
Yep.
Yeah. And then, after that, there's the construction phase, which is...
Correct, yep.
If I average out some of the different townships around, $900,000, $1,000,000,000 for construct, actual construction.
That's what we're comparing, just based on the amount of fixtures, yep.
Yep.
Obviously, the various ways of financing that and so on, but they also indicated to me that if we were starting in 2022, early 2022, the feasibility study would actually give us an estimate of the project cost. And so, I think that's a little bit above and beyond what we originally thought would be in the feasibility study, so it's just another piece of information.
Thank you. Just will you move on to the Solicitor's Report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are two items on the Solicitor's Report, both dealing with the Lancy Court. I believe you had in your package some documentation concerning the authorization to execute a deed of dedication to Pendat for the right-of-way that runs in front of Durham Road that's associated with the Lancy Court as a first matter. And if that is approved, secondly, we have a motion, we need a motion to approve the certificate of completion number 18, which is the final certificate and the final payment back to the developer for money withheld, but there'll still be some other reserve funds in addition to that we will continue to hold.
Should this be broken down into two motions?
Yes, they're related, but they're not identical, you know, they've covered different areas.
Okay. Do you want to shape the first motion?
Sure. The first motion would be a motion to authorize execution of a deed of dedication to Pendat for the required right-of-way along Durham Road that's associated with the Lancy Court.
Okay, do I have such a motion?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions from the board on this motion, from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 4-0.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the second motion would read as follows. Motion to approve certificate of completion number 18, which is the final certificate of completion that certifies the project as complete for the Lancy Court based on the recommendations of Newtown Township Engineer.
Do I have such a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, and we have all this information from CKS, and we're all...
Yes, we do.
Any questions from the board on this motion, from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 4-0.
And that's all I have in the Solicitor's Report this evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of this evening is $4,521,161. Plan expiration is before the board with no action required, and Chief Hearn is here to give his monthly police chief report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, board members. Month of November, police report, we documented 1,532 calls for service, documented over 19,000 patrol miles on our vehicles. November was a busy month, we had 16 arrests, four for DUI, six narcotics, one false report to law enforcement... month. We had 16 arrests, four for DUI, six narcotics, one false report to law enforcement, two commercial burglaries, one fraud, threw a detective's investigation, one harassment, which was a road rage incident, and we actually even had one theft, attempted theft of our police NRAD system, which is our speed timing device. There were 17 new cases referred to detectives, seven crime scenes processed, some of which were sexual assault, the two commercial burglars I spoke of, four Dries narcotic sales, and one threat via handgun. There were 65 traffic crashes, eight injuries, 29 injuries, 14 property damages, two hit runs, one auto paid, and 20 deer collisions. There were 139 traffic citations issued and 111 warnings issued. Our notable jobs, as I mentioned, was the attempted theft of our speed timing device with an apprehension and bail was set at $100,000. On 11/20, we had an overturned dump truck at Swamp Road in a bypass with entrapment. Road was closed for several hours, several hours and critical injuries to the operator. He's still in Penn Hospital in Philadelphia in extremely critical condition. On 11/21, there was a assault at the PetSmart parking lot. We are still seeking a white Tesla Model X with a male operator. So if you were in the vicinity and you have some information, please forward it to the police department. The investigation is ongoing. One of our commercial burglaries was at the Snapbox storage at Penn's Trail Road. Officers responded, surrounded the area, and actually arrested the offender on the scene. On 11/28, we had an armed subject with a shotgun, was suicidal. He was successfully secured and taken in for treatment. There was two targeted truck enforcement details resulting in 19 inspections, three citations, and six warnings. Significant events. As you know, this past Sunday, we had our Newtown Holiday Parade, and with the tragic incident that happened in Wisconsin, we ensured that we had complete safety and security for everybody attending. It was a great turnout, and there was no issues reported. The promotional exams were completed. Police promotions are expected to occur in January. Part of our public service announcements, Sycamore Street, I was asked to follow up on Sycamore Street. As you know, we had a couple pedestrians struck along Sycamore Street. I met with Carly Mannan from the Traffic Management Association of Bucks County. We came up, we actually surveyed the area, come up with some suggestions and ideas to enhance safety and security down there. We are working with our Department of Public Works to correct them deteriorating items. We also, also going to push out an educational campaign, both to the business districts in the area. Aggressive driving was used for strategic enforcement along that corridor as well. The bottom line is motorists still have to yield to pedestrians in crosswalks, and pedestrians have to cross in the crosswalks, not mid-block. Fraudsters continuing with the holiday season approaching, please do not give out your personal information. If it's too good to be true, it probably is. Don't buy something that you're not accustomed to buying. Our Shop With A Cop is December 11th from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. That's this Saturday at the Target in Langhorne. We will accept volunteers. You want to come, wrap presents, and shop with kids, please stop by and say yes. Your police department has volunteered to be there to support this program. And on behalf of the police department, also please thank Karen Moorhead for her letter. It was greatly appreciated. It was our honor and privilege to give her parents the escort they deserved. Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Chief, I have a question in regards to the road rage incident that happened in the PetSmart parking lot.
Yes, sir.
I, I do believe that was recorded by a bystander, and is that, that video on our website and on our television? So if somebody recognizes the person, is there a phone, like, an anonymous phone call they can call so they don't have to feel their, you know?
Yeah, there are numbers listed on our Crime Watch webpage that you can actually phone in a tip, and we would follow up with that tip. That'd be fine.
Thank you. That's all. Anybody else have something for chief?
I just wanted to thank the, the chief for making the security arrangements for the parade. I was marching in the parade and, and really noticed each intersection had like a Public Works truck and/or a couple of police vehicles. So it, you know, gave us some comfort level. We realized it like at the second block end, but that and, yeah, I would just promote the Shop With A Cop as well. My wife and I have a, have a time scheduled to be there and wrap gifts, so we'll be there.
Thank you.
Chief, I'd like to thank you for following up with Carly Mannan of the, the Traffic Management Association. And there were some good ideas, especially, I want to talk a little bit about the education that you are planning. I had gone back several years to 2010, where we had a traffic committee, joint traffic committee, that recommended a pedestrian safety week, or two weeks every year, where we could really do, you know, pull out all the stops for education. Perhaps the township can make a resolution to, to do that. Would that be something you might think is worthwhile to do?
I would have to look into it. I would rather it be at a 365-day program where people were paying attention, but.
Yeah, sure.
I'm flexible.
You can't educate them 365 days, not even kids in school.
The philosophy is, the way we're looking at it is that we, we contacted the Newtown Business Association and actually spoke to Kyle today regarding the Rotary Club about hitting out the businesses, bringing out flyers, having them distribute it to their customers, who is, who are the base that is crossing the streets that are involved in these incidents. So I think that's strategically is probably the best maneuver to do at this point.
But I was thinking, if you had a, a week or two weeks in the fall and the spring or whenever, you'd get more media attention. We can have some kind of special events, and we can make the education more widespread. But also, you mentioned these, these signs, what do you call them, the?
Yield to pedestrian signage?
Yeah. I noticed on a, on July 2018 Google image of that intersection, we had such a sign there. I don't know what happened to it. Do you know what happened to that sign, Mr. Lewis?
A drunk driver probably ran it over. They're, they're disposable signs, they're placed in the center of the roadway.
$400 for a disposable sign?
$450, affordable sign. I'm attempting to try to get six for free through Pendot.
Uh huh.
It's still a work in progress. I can't guarantee it, but we're trying.
Should we call them too, or what?
You can adjust the budget if you want. We'll add six more to the, to the, but that's what I'm looking to do. I'm trying to, to educate the public. We don't really want to enforce jaywalking through our, our residents. I'm not in the business to do that.
But I mean, if somebody destroys that sign, do they have to pay for it?
Yes, if, if they're still on the scene.
Also, I know that the township has purchased a lot of this white markings that you recommended they do, and I'm assuming they're going to continue to do that, like at the intersection of North Sycamore and Durham Road, down the other end of that block?
I requested the crosswalks all the way from Chandler Hall all the way up to Durham Road to be restripped, but the weather conditions have to come into play, and the materials and Joe's manpower from DBW.
Right.
But he's working on it.
Great. Well, that's the best we can do. Thanks very much.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Mr. Chairman, I have two other items under my report for the board's consideration. First of which is the 2000, the 2021 international dump truck that was previously ordered. This, earlier this year is, is almost ready for delivery. We've obtained a lease purchase quote from Municipal Finance Inc., similar to the lease quote we had, we had previously approved for the F-350. The proposal is for three-year, four payments, financing option which, with a 2.69% interest rate. As quoted, the payments would be $25,000 for this year, 2021, and $47,523.89 annually for payments two to four. So the, the appropriate motion would be motion to approve the three-year financing for the 2021 dump truck with Municipal Finance through Co-Stars.
Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any questions from the board?
This appears to be a, a slight saving, a couple, a few hundred dollars from what was budgeted.
So this year, we had a total of $29,015 in the 2021 budget. So it's a savings of roughly $4,000. In consecutive years thereafter, we had budgeted $54,904. So we're roughly $6,000 less on consecutive years.
Good. Any further questions from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I call the question always in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any pose? Passes four zero.
Final item under my report, Mr. Chairman, is the, we have a family that is requested to place a memorial bench at the site of Veterans Park over by the climbing structure if you walk down sort of past where Noah's playground is. So the appropriate motion would be authorization to approve municipal, I'm sorry, memorial bench at Veterans, Veterans Park.
Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And, Mr. Lewis, just to expand, this, this is, this is a memorial in regards to the, the loss of a 16-month-old son, and the family would just like to dedicate that bench to this, to their son. A tragic, tragic loss for them. Any, any questions from the board on this, from the public?
Just to note that the, the family is paying for the bench and everything.
The family's, yes, that's correct. The family's paying for the bench and, and the plaque. The township will do the actual installation.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions from the public? Seeing none, I call the question always in favor. Aye. Any pose? Passes four zero.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes, bills list, and reports. Mr. Mack?
Okay. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 23, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion, a second. Any questions from the board on the minutes from the public? Seeing none, I call the question always in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any pose? Passes four zero.
Okay. I make a motion to approve our bills according to the bills list dated December 8, 2021, totaling $354,465.25.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, on the bills list. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, I call the question always in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any pose? Passes four zero.
Finally, I make a motion that we approve interfund transfers as per the bills list dated December 8, 2021, totaling $259,157.49.
Okay. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, I call the question always in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any pose? Passes four zero. Thank you, Mr. Mack. We'll go into our second session of public comment. Anyone who would like to have something to say, please come up to the podium. Okay, seeing none. We'll go on to old business. Anyone have any old business tonight? Okay. Anyone have any new business tonight? Any business tonight? Okay. And we did, we did make the, the statement that we had an executive session. Mr. Shankman, do we have need for an executive session after the meeting?
We do not.
We do not. Okay. All right. Seeing none, I will take a motion for adjournment.
Sorry.
And without any objection, we are adjourned for this evening. Thank you, everyone.